This planning commission meeting on thirteen October twenty twenty one is called to order. I would love to read the public hearing rules and the opening, but I don't have a script. So there's no rules or reading of rules? Okay.
No.
Because this is a working session, we will not have a reading of the public hearing rules. So we will now move on to the roll call by the planning staff.
Sorry, I wasn't expecting it either. Commissioner Bill Lewis.
Here.
Vice Chairman Sean White.
Here.
Commissioner Daniel Oars.
Here.
Commissioner Joshua Thomas, I do not see him online. He is absent. And Commissioner Sean Zernikow. Sorry. And Commissioner Kathy Green. And we have a forum.
Great. Okay, well now we will move to the pledge of allegiance. All right, moving on to the first and only true agenda item. I would like to see if there's a motion to approve the previous planning commission meeting minutes.
Commissioner Oars, I move to approve the minutes for the September eight twenty twenty one planning commission hearing.
I second. This is Bill Lewis.
Hey. Commissioner Kathy Green. Commissioner Sean Zernikow. Commissioner Danny Oars. Commissioner Bill Lewis.
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Sean White.
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
All right. Well, since we have no development to review tonight, we are now going to move directly to reports and communications. So first I will ask commissioners if anything in the reports and communications department. Don't either? So with that, over to the planning staff.
Good morning. Oh geez, where am I? Good evening, Vice Chair and members of the commission for the record. My name's Megan Harrington. I'm the planning director here for the Town of Monument. There are just a few things that we are going to discuss with you this evening as why we had the work session. Just kind of prompting that work session is statements and questions from the Board of Trustees related specifically to building height in the newly adopted code. Several of the Board of Trustee members asked if the building height along I twenty five is appropriately set. There was a brief conversation that yes, this is a new code and the height was evaluated, but there was a request that the planning commission take another look at that. So Debbie has pulled together some examples of building height related to I twenty five that we'll look at as part of the work session. And as part of this work session this evening, we will also be talking about industrial land uses. So not specific to any one property, I want you all to keep that in mind. We will be discussing industrial land use and what we want industrial and warehouse and distribution type uses to look like in the Town of Monument. We will be talking about that a little more globally. So how do we or do we at all amend the code or look at certain code provisions to add related to industrial design standards? So we'll be walking you through that. At our last meeting, we had a brief conversation about business cards. So business cards don't come in manageable sizes. They come in, you know, like a box of a million. And so what we have done as a starter for every planning commission member is you have a little envelope of a few business cards to get you started that are general monument planning commission member business cards. So I would say if you're out on a site or doing a site visit for an item in the future and somebody asks, what are you doing here? You can say, hey, I'm a planning commission member with the Town of Monument and at least you have a business card that states as much. The phone number and the email on the card are the general email and phone number for the planning department so we can vouch for you. So let's start, let's start with that, see if you use them or not. And then maybe in twenty twenty two, we can talk about a way to formalize a business card for each planning commission member. The other item that we wanted to talk about here briefly was public comment for items not on the agenda. So we don't really have that on our agenda this evening. We talked about this briefly last month. I believe there was a conversation, has been conversation back and forth. Your bylaws do not specify that you have to have an item for public comments not on the agenda, but as I understand it in the past, you have allowed that as part of your agenda. And so I believe as part of the code update, there was some conversation on if the planning commission needed to do that or not. So I would like a bit more of a formalized direction from the commission. While it's not in your bylaws, there's nothing stating that we can't look at the bylaws or that you can't just continue to add that to your agenda. So my question for you this evening is, would you like to continue to have an item on the agenda, an item at the end of the agenda, which is for the public to come and speak to you? The time can be limited, of course, but do you want to leave that on the agenda for three minutes or four minutes for the public to speak on items not on the agenda? Or would you like to remove that as the bylaws would suggest?
So is this the point at which we can have this discussion?
No, this, you know, the communications in the work session, because there's no formal items, we're just having a more of a conversation on these items. So this would be the time to do that. Then the next item we'll talk about before we transition into the zoning workshop would be information on Higbee Road annexation. So now is probably a great time if you want to chat a little bit about public comments not on the agenda.
Should we continue to keep our microphones on?
Yes, we are, we are live and streaming this as we would any other planning commission.
Well, I have, certainly have, but I first defer commissioners.
I certainly would like to see it remain on as I think that in the past, we've heard comments from the citizens on matters that weren't on the agenda, but it's certainly helped us determine how we want to look at other agenda items that might come forward to us because of comments that have been made by the public on non-agenda items.
And this is Commissioner Lewis. I, I have no problem with leaving it on. To be honest with you, probably in the last couple of years of board meetings that I've sat, we really haven't had that many topic sessions where public come to us with issues that are not on the agenda. So, and I agree with Danny's perspective that, you know, it gives them a forum to speak a little bit, but I do believe we've got to keep it to that.
That's okay, Commissioner, this is my second. So I'm not far ahead of you. Well, we can structure that however you'd like. In the past, the past agendas that I've seen, it was just similar to what the Board of Trustees said, just says items, discussion of items not on the agenda, but we can certainly put there in parentheses, you know, the matters pertaining to planning or something relating to planning, planning commission, planning and development.
They're here to talk about the school district. Just want to get on record. Hmm. That, that makes sense. I don't know that I've seen that happen.
No, in fact, we could just put related to land use and that would pretty well cover the jam up, wouldn't it?
Absolutely, and the chairman, we can give the chairman some language, right, to just prompting the public that are here that, you know, if there's items that aren't related to planning, the Board of Trustees is probably the better venue for that. The Board of Trustees is a similar item, so we can have, the chairman can certainly try to direct that conversation and also limit that. So I'm hearing that we want to leave it on there for now and see how it goes. Again, last month, we had one member of the public that came to discuss landscaping applications. And so that was very relevant to the planning commission and I thought that was a good conversation. In fact, there was a few items that he mentioned there that I hadn't really thought about and we, something that maybe we should look into. So we will leave it, again, it's not on the agenda here tonight because we are having a work session and the Vice Chairman can determine if there was any members of the public that wish to speak, could speak as part of the work session. Being in the future, we will ensure that that is the last item on the agenda and kind of see how it goes. Again, it's not, it's not in your bylaws right now, so we can just continue to do that as we have been, and if we need to add it to the bylaws, we can certainly do that in the future.
And I, personally, I'm not a big fan of having non-agenda items because it just really is a Pandora's box where we could end up going down trails that have been rehashed in the past and decided upon, those sorts of things. But in the end, I believe that it has more because it gives an opportunity to the public to come and be heard. And sometimes we may have someone sit through an entire planning commission meeting that they wouldn't have sat through. They didn't have an opportunity at the end because they want to say something and they hear what's going on in their town that they wouldn't have heard of. If that happens and it serves to get people engaged, then I'm, I'm for the bunny trails and the rehashing. I think more often than not, we, we end up getting relevant comments rather than diatribes or, or things that aren't pertinent. So in the end, I'm also for it. But I do agree, Kathy, that having a qualifier that it's related to planning and development and land use. And then if we see that it's working after a certain amount of time, then I don't see any reason why not to actually add it into the bylaws. So we don't rehash this, you know, five years down the road when somebody says, why are we?
Absolutely. We will continue and we will check back on it in, you know, six months, nine months, depending on how many meetings we have in that, in that time period. And determine if you'd like to move forward with just amending that in the bylaws or kind of check in and see how it's going. So you'll see that on your next meeting that they will be, the last item will be items not on the agenda. The next communication for you is information on Higbee Road annexation. We did receive a formal submittal from El Paso County to annex a portion of Higbee Road. Debbie's going to talk to you a little bit about it here. That annexation, petition for annexation and acceptance of annexation does need to go forward to the Board of Trustees. And typically, an annexation would come to the planning commission. However, with the new code, the way the new code is written, an annexation that has no companion land use items, right, this is just right of way. There's no zoning that accompanies it, no other land use action. That annexation by itself, under the new code, does not go to the planning commission. It goes directly to the Board of Trustees. So we have that set up to go to the Board of Trustees on November fifteenth. However, since typically you would see an annexation, and this is a little different, we thought it would be valuable for the planning commission to hear a little bit about the Higbee Road annexation, why it's being annexed, and a future roadway project that is planned with Tri-View. So I'm going to turn it over to Debbie and she's going to give you an informational briefing ahead of the hearing that will be had before the Board of Trustees on November fifteenth.
Good evening. The Board of County Commissioners of El Paso County, Colorado, has submitted a petition for annexation for approximately twenty-one point four four two acres of Higbee Road right of way. The annexation is from the east line of Interstate I twenty-five and continues east to the end of the Town of Monument's municipal boundary. The endpoint is the south, is on the south of Higbee Road, which is eastern edge of Home Place Ranch. A vicinity map shown on the screen shows you the area that's going to be annexed, the beginning of the annexation and the end of the annexation points there. The extent of Higbee Road is adjacent to the municipal boundary of the Town of Monument. There is a roadway improvement project planned to be coordinated with Tri-View Metro District. And the developers of Jackson Creek North filings three through six and Home Place Ranch have already, will be given funding to help pay for the improvements. And any other town project that comes into play will also be responsible, if anything comes into play, to help with the funding of Higbee Road. And El Paso County Planning Department is also aware if any new projects moving forward from now happens to happen on Higbee Road, there will be, the developer will also be responsible to help pay for funding of improvements for Higbee Road. And on November fifteenth, Tri-View Metro District's on-call engineer, John Merritt, will be attending that hearing and going over the design that he has come up with for the Higbee Road improvements as well. And town staff has reviewed the annexation petition and found that it meets the criteria from the state statutes to be considered for annexation. Does anyone have any questions regarding the Higbee Road annexation?
I guess my question is why?
Well, we all know that improvements need to be done on Higbee Road. It's needed to be done for a while. And the town has been working on this for a couple of years to annex the road and the county finally petitioned for us to take it over. So those improvements can be done and Tri-View Metro District has agreed to make, to do those improvements.
So we got tired of waiting for the county to take care of their problem, took their problem onto our fiscal.
Well, a lot of our development is coming off of Higbee Road too, so it's.
And I guess I only bring it up because I know Danny and I were here for, was it Home Place Ranch or whatever? When the county said, no, we can't do that and push it all the way, push Glen Eagle all the way through to Higbee because Higbee, they couldn't support Higbee's growth. So it's, it's just interesting now that they want to annex it. And oh, by the way, within the last twelve months, they put how many other developments along Higbee Road. So, and now it's our problem. So that's, it's just the irony of it's very interesting to me.
And I think Tri-View, Tri-View's taking on a lot of that burden and the Board of Trustees has specifically asked that Tri-View attend the hearing on the fifteenth to, I think, probably have some of that conversation that you're alluding to.
This was never part of Tri-View's. Is it under Tri-View? Yeah, might have, I haven't heard anything since I've been here.
Well, yeah, we'll definitely look into some of that.
When Higbee, or as Higbee is today under the county, can the county not take funding from developers that are developing alongside of Higbee to help with the improvements? Can that only be done when it's under the municipal umbrella?
No. They can take, they can take money. I think from, and Debbie can, can fill in the blanks. From what I understand is that because Home Place Ranch and some of the larger Jackson Creek development is all within the municipal boundaries of the Town of Monument, El Paso County, unincorporated El Paso County feels that Monument is more impactful to Higbee Road and should have the responsibility for Higbee Road. And because this is Tri-View, it ends up really not being the Town of Monument, it ends up being Tri-View. That conversation has happened between unincorporated El Paso County and Tri-View and Tri-View has agreed and said, yes, we will take this on in partnership with the developers that are developing property in Monument within Tri-View. And we will complete those improvements, but it needs to be within the district, which means the town ends up owning the right of way, but the district has all of the financial responsibility for it related to construction and then maintenance.
It's better to be in charge of it yourself. I can see the wisdom in that.
So, so Home Place Ranch will ultimately bear some cost related to the Higbee?
So that was already agreed to in the original approval of the Home Place Ranch, that they would have a certain amount that they would contribute towards the Higbee Road improvements?
There was discussion of it, but never a certain amount as until Tri-View did a road design and that determined the amounts of how much each developer should pay for their size of a development. And John Merritt did a study, a traffic impact study in the design of the road to determine how much everyone should pay. And that's, and Tri-View talked with them separately after John worked on that. So it was never discussed during Home Place Ranch when it was going. It was discussions, but not the exact amount of money was discussed at that time.
And we will look into that, and I know from Home Place Ranch, they're only on phase one. And phase one is not even, as you remember from last month, phase one is not even triggering the need for the connection to Higbee, right, per the traffic study. And so from a Home Place Ranch perspective, I think there is time for them to determine and work with Tri-View to determine how much of responsibility they have for those improvements. And we'll definitely look into the districts and see how that's being funded. But I would also assume, and I know there's some contractual obligations with the developers in Tri-View that they are going to participate.
And I would just add, when Home Place Ranch first came to us, we asked, even though they were only on phase one, to look into pushing Glen Eagle through to lessen the capacity on Glen Eagle through was a promontory point down Baptist, which is already becoming problematic, to that intersection of Baptist and Jackson Creek. You know, to start to look at ways to flow it. And the developer, if I recall correctly, was like, yeah, I hear you, it's good, but the county said no.
I'm curious about the design that's being brought forward now. Who did you say did the design?
It's John Merritt, the HR green. He's an on-call consultant engineer for Tri-View Metro District. And, yep, and he'll be presenting that design in November fifteenth.
Okay. I'm just curious, the basis of the design. When you do a road design, you have to factor in the development that's going to drive the traffic. So was it looking to the existing approved development or even possible future development that could occur based on zoning?
Well, the main development that's going to be impacted on the town side of the road, and he's working with the county as well on that side of the road too, to make sure his design will work. And the developments are Jackson Creek North, three through six, which is a big chunk of that area. And then it, that boundary line, it goes up to Home Place Ranch. So it's immediately, Home Place Ranch is right after Jackson Creek North, three through six. And then it ends, Higbee Road, what we're annexing. We're not annexing all of Higbee Road, we're just annexing what you see on this screen tonight. And that's basically where Home Place Ranch ends in that area. Yep, that's the end of the town boundary, yep.
I'm just a little concerned that we would only design for what we know today and not anticipating what could be tomorrow. Way expansions expensive to do, more expensive to do after that.
Do you, so Home Place Ranch is definitely a project that's garnered a lot of attention. The design of the road and the construction of the road timing is a bit separate from the annexation. Would you like a presentation on the roadway design in December? We could certainly ask Tri-View to come and, and give a similar presentation that they're going to be giving to the Board of Trustees on the fifteenth to the planning commission as, again, as an informational item. I know they have some slides, right, that they're going to present John Merritt, the engineer, or perhaps Jim McGrady, both can be here to discuss that. I mean, that's definitely a planning commission related, if you're interested. I don't think we have items for November. So there's, it's likely that we will not have a planning commission meeting in November and I'd hate to pull you together just for that informational item, but we could certainly ask for a presentation in December. You just want the slide? You want, you want to ask questions?
Yeah, they're going to be roundabouts throughout Higbee Road. Yeah, there's, yep, there's going to be roundabouts throughout Higbee Road on all major intersections.
So we will, we will reach out to Tri-View and have them come and give their presentation here to the planning commission at the, at the December meeting. So we will keep you updated on if they are able to do that. Debbie will call and ask them to be here.
Keep me from laying awake at night, what went into that design. Thank you.
You just have to worry about it until December.
Exhausted by the time we get to December.
It will be in November too, at, at the board hearing too, so you could have precursor of this, of it, the packet submitted.
Any other questions on Higbee Road? Okay, we'll line you up for a presentation in December. Mr. Vice Chairman, if I may, move into the work session, directly into the work session items?
Could I insert a comment? Debbie, you'll remember back. Debbie, you'll remember back some time ago, and other commissioners as well, that, when the city town manager was in position, he indicated that Tribe You had some insight on what they would do on Jackson Creek Parkway, at the area where King Supers is, where all that traffic congestion is, and indicated that possibly we could get a, a briefing on, on their insight related to how they would make that intersection, those intersections, a, a little safer?
Yes, they're working on that. They have to get approval with the county, because the improvement will be based on that signal. So they have been working on that. I, I don't know how far they've come with those improvements, with working with the county, and I could follow up with Jim McGrady on that.
Yeah, because he just indicated that, and, and it was sort of loose when, when it was brought out, that it's nothing refined, but at least we could get the concept of what they intended to do down there, because that is a serious... King Supers, Baptist Road, and...
I, I do know some of the improvements they were talking about, but nothing set in stone. And I could discuss that with you if you want me to. Yeah. So at the signal, at the Baptist Road, Jackson Creek signal there, they were thinking about putting a special signal that you can't turn right on green. You have to wait for a little right turn lane arrow to turn right onto Jackson Creek Parkway. So people coming at a King Supers would have more time turning out if they can do that. But they're finding out if they are allowed to do that with the county. Yeah.
To the previous question, yes, I think it's a good time to move on to the work.
Okay, so Debbie's going to lead this off with a discussion of building height. So again, the question was posed by Board of Trustee Stevens. Does the Planning Commission have any thoughts on building height, or where building height, where building height was established through the code, and specifically, building heights related to the east and west side of I-25?
Yes, that's from that one. Yes, this is off of what the code was approved off of. And the old code versus the new code is what I'm comparing it to. And what we passed the ordinance to have 75 feet on one side, and 55, 50 feet on the other side, there was just more of a discussion and wanting more information regarding what's out there right now. What's, there's approved PUD plans that are out there now that don't have those building heights. And I just want everyone to be clear on those building heights. So when it, the final site plans come to you, you're aware that we can't use those restrictions, because they're PUD and they already had those. Yeah. Yep. Yep.
So it was a two-fold question from the Board of Trustees. We'll get into the, the second fold here towards the end, the, the being, is there, are there any items within the town zoning code that the Planning Commission feels need to be evaluated or changed? We did have the conversation that the consultant just finished the update, new code just into effect July 16th, but it was asked of the Planning Commission to think about anything that maybe could have been missed, or that you feel should be addressed further. So we will, at the end of this, ask you if there's any of those items that you have now, and we'll put them on a spreadsheet and start to track those and figure out how else staff can address those. And then it was, does the Planning Commission need to have a discussion about building heights? Is the Planning Commission, is the Planning Commission happy with where, where building heights ended up with? So Debbie's just going to go through some height comparisons about what's out there now, in hopes that if you're good with how everything ended up with your previous conversations, we'll just reiterate that.
And if there's anything that you want to change, we can always change it in our municipal code. Always write an ordinance if we're not happy with it. It's not set in stone. And you can interrupt me during this presentation if you have questions, or would like to go further into how you feel about building heights for a particular project. First, I'm going to start off with YMCA as, to use that as a reference point, because I know every presentation we give, that's the reference point everyone has in their head of how, how tall is the YMCA building? So the maximum building height was approved for 50 feet. However, the overall building height's 40 feet. And then Woodman Valley Chapel, their final PD site plan, now PUD plan. The maximum height that was approved was 45, and the actual height was 43 feet. That includes the parapet height at floor roof is 33 feet, and the ridge height at sloped roof is 43 feet. So it did get to the 43 feet, which was, had a 45-foot max, but they were under that. And I just put a picture of a parapet, so everyone knows what a parapet is for all the presentations. And then Conexus Preliminary PD Site Plan. That was the area where the church is, and the area adjacent to the church of Woodman Valley Chapel. That's Conexus Preliminary PD Site Plan. And that maximum building height is 35 feet plus a four-foot parapet. So since the Woodman Valley Chapel was part of the Conexus Preliminary PD Site Plan, that's why they were able to go up to 43 feet because of the parapet. And then Conexus Phase Two and Three Sketch PD Plan. The maximum building height there is 90 feet. And then Santa Fe Park Preliminary PD Site Plan. The maximum building height is 90 feet. And then Falcon Commerce Center Sketch PD Plan was 100 foot. That was that weird one that had the obsolete zoning area that they wanted to carry over that 100 feet. And then, of course, Falcon Commerce Center Phase One Preliminary PD Site Plan. The approved maximum height's 100 feet, which carried over from that approved sketch PD plan. Oh, no, it's not on my screen. It's up there.
Trying to.
Yeah. Oh. Thank you. I saw that too, but I couldn't do anything on my screen. The next one is Willow Springs Ranch Preliminary Final PD Site Plan, and the maximum building height there is 35 feet for the residential homes. And they are starting to build soon, just FYI. And then the Village PD Sketch Plan, now called Monument Junction. No more villages. Maximum commercial slash multifamily building height is 45 to 50 feet. And the maximum single-family or townhomes maximum building height is 30 to 35 feet. And they recently submitted their, Monument Junction recently submitted Phase One. It's on the, the east side of Jackson Creek Parkway. And everything there, the, the homes are 35 feet, and they match there from their sketch plan. Yes, let me go back. Yep, that's a site off of Jackson Creek Parkway, off, it borders 105, past the high school. Yep, yep. And they recently submitted one side. Yes, and all our projects are now on our project development page, that you could look at a, a site plan submitted before it comes to you. Monument Junction. And it's on our project development page. And I could bring that up later to show you too, because that's one of our new pages that we've added to our website. And then Village at Jackson Creek Preliminary PD Site Plan, which we're all familiar with that one. We came up, the Planning Commission came up with this one. Buildings located greater than 600 feet of I-25 shall not exceed 50 feet in height, and buildings located within 600 feet of I-25 shall not exceed 75 feet in height. And then Monument Marketplace North Preliminary PD Site Plan, which is adjacent to Village at Jackson Creek. The maximum building height is 50 feet plus a four-foot parapet. And then Monument Ridge Preliminary PD Site Plan over by the Walgreens and McDonald's across the street from King Supers. The maximum building height there is 50 feet for hotel and 35 feet for all other buildings. And then here's a picture of our official zoning map. Just in case you wanted to refer back to it, I put it in the presentation.
Yeah, and you'll see there's a lot, I mean, a lot of the property along I-25 is already zoned PUD. And as Debbie goes through these mapped areas, there's not a lot of undeveloped properties in that I-25 corridor, or there aren't a lot of properties that are in a straight zone district, right? Because the PUD zone has already established the heights. So you're, there's minimal properties that are vacant, straight zone properties in which the new code heights apply.
No.
We, so we, we could, so let's, let's, we, we can, we could do that. And so a little bit of what we're going to be talking about on the next piece of it is going to be the industrial property, and, and some of that, that, that could be zoning overlays or, or rezoning properties to change building heights is kind of discussed in there, as far as how to address industrial, right? There's, there's, I call it the small hammer and the big hammer. The small hammer, the medium hammer, and the big hammer. So we probably won't go down that hole now, but we could kind of talk about that as we talk about options for how to address some of these design issues that we might be having with, related to industrial. But it, I mean...
Yes, that was in Falcon Commerce Center. So before Falcon Commerce Center rezoned, they annexed into the town years ago, and they sat there with that zoning, old zoning designation that the town never used. It was a zoning designation the county used, and it never transferred over. I think it was called PIP, PIP or something. Yeah, it was a weird zoning that we've never used. So they had to rezone. The planned unit development at the time was planned development. And they wanted to carry over that approved 100-foot building height that was approved during that zoning, during that time, with the old zoning designation.
No. Zoning, zoning is, the, the zone for the property doesn't expire. However, our code states that the vested property right is vested with the preliminary, preliminary PD plan, preliminary or final PD plan. So it's a little, right, we're going down that rabbit hole between zoning and having a zoning that we approve certain uses, but having a vested property right phase, which is after the zoning. And I think that's been a lot of the conversation around industrial zoning and the comprehensive plan, as it relates to characteristics of industrial uses. And I think in a PUD, state statute says that a PUD sets height, type, and density. So the PUD, the height is set at the zoning. So again, now we are, we could find ourselves in a conversation between the PUD and the zoning establishing the height, and then the, what the preliminary or final site plan says related to the overall design of the buildings themselves, because that document does indeed expire. So that's the difference between a straight zone, a zone that's kind of codified within our code, and the PUD, which is a little different, right? And then the PUD is setting that height type and density. So we can definitely work on getting, I, I don't know, do you have an acreage of a map of those areas that are zoned? For instance, the, the commercial zone at the corner of Baptist and I-25, those areas that aren't developed that are in those straight zones, Debbie? Do we know the overall acreage of that? And we can work on getting you, we could work on getting you that number, but it's not a large number when you think of, I think there's only 450 to 500 commercial office industrial-type acres within the Town of Monument currently. And you have at least 300 acres that are PUD adjacent to I-25 in that Baptist Road area, from 105 to Baptist Road and a little bit south. I mean, those PUDs are almost 300 acres. And then subtracting out the other, you know, random developments that are on the east side of I-25 that are already have site plans. We can, we can winnow that down and, and definitely try to come up with a number.
When I think of I-25 corridor from just a little bit south of Baptist, up through, up through, that, that is the character of Monument to most of those who see Monument. It's that corridor. And, and we have been struggling with the, the idea that we were hamstrung in allowing development that, even 75 feet, that, in my opinion, and I think most of the commissioners would agree, would substantially change the feel of, of small town by having essentially what you have, like the Highlands District up, up in Denver, where you have malls alongside I-25, which is lovely for Denver. I, I love that kind of development, but it is inconsistent, in my opinion, with the comprehensive plan of Monument. So how much leverage do we have by tackling some modifications to the zoning that we recently approved to constrain that from happening? So, but I, I just know in the past, and from some of the discussion, so much of that is PUD, it, it's more problematic. But, but can we do something about it? By tackling it?
This is why we're having a discussion tonight about it.
Something that came to my mind. We're controlled considerably by what's already in place and, and the boundaries we've got. The question I have is, do we want to look at, can we look at, or what latitudes do we have when it comes time to future annexations? Strictly, in other words, I don't know a whole lot about annexation, but I, I do know that folks want us to annex certain things at certain times. What control do we have when we get into the annexation process to put limits on things at that point in time, rather than... Just like that 100-foot that we annexed down there. Did, did we have any latitude at that time? Or was there anything in place that would have permitted us not to do the annexation, or to at least negotiate changes? Because I'm sure the way Monument is growing, we're going to have more annexations.
Oh, yeah. And with an annexation, we have all the latitude in the world, because that is a property owner agreeing to our stipulations and terms as a town through... as a town through an annexation agreement and establishment of zoning with the annexation. So anybody that would annex into the town in the future would need to agree to the town's terms and would need to establish a zoning. And that could be a straight zoning from the code, or it could be a PUD, which again, sets the height type and density. And the planning commission and the board of trustees would need to, you know, approve that.
Something to say, but I've been able to have a 100-foot build all this time that I have this property? It can say, so? These are the conditions? We're not constrained by that?
No. No, we're, we're, we're not constrained by that at all. We are...
Okay, but I guess my, my question is, and I heard what you said, Harrington, is there anything that we want to set, try to set in place now that says, so that future board of trustees and future planning commissions don't have to sit around and talk about what that height is going to be when they come in? It's going to be established by our code. So that when it comes in, those discussions don't take place, because I know how those discussions take place. You have, when you have a public entity out there talking, it's almost too late sometimes to put numbers in there because they come up with very convincing reasons. Why, but if it's in the code, you understand what I'm saying?
Absolutely, and I think Debbie, this is a, this table that Debbie you have up here right now kind of shows...
Sorry, forgot to turn that on. If they annex in into a straight zone, then they have to abide by our height restrictions that's in our code. But that's why a lot of people come in as a PUD, but the planning staff has to also agree with it too, in the town.
So if there was somebody that wanted to annex into the town, and we said, okay, we're going to annex you in as, what's a new commercial zone? Debbie, do you have that on the next slide here? We're going to annex you in as community, business, there you go, business campus. If we're annexing you in, and we're, the town states we want to establish the business campus zone, west of I-25, that would be 75 feet, east of I-25, it would be 50, 50 feet. And that would be your building height, because that's what's in the new code. So you can see 50 feet on the east side for, for a majority of these new zone districts. The community commercial, the business campus, light industrial, 50 on the east, 75 on the west. And on the west, I mean, I guess there is some, still some potential annexation opportunities on the west in the future for the town? So if that's too, I, I guess the whole point is 75 feet on the west now, if that's i- in a commercial zone district, if that's too high, if that's too tall?
Well, I, I guess my question would be, so on the west, if we're thinking about the west of I-25, what we currently have? How about if we annex beyond what we have is 75 feet too high and some of that beyond?
And that's what we wanted to...
All along, Mitchell?
Yep.
And at that point, you're, you're quite a ways off of I-25 Old Denver Road. I mean, you know, then the conversation goes to, how feasible is commercial development that far off of I-25, on the west side of I-25? Probably, probably not. We'd probably see more homes than anything on the west side of I-25 if we started to, the town was approached about annexation of property. But I can't say that it would never be, right? Just put your microphone closer, please. And you know, and, and some of that is absolutely, comes down to, do we want to have all of the properties zoned PUD? Or do we want to utilize the tools in the new code, which would be our straight established zones where we have those codified expectations? I mean, it's, it's a question for when we do have those future annexations. I, we're not having any conversations about annexations right now. So, you know, building height is 75 feet too tall for commercial-type zoning. You can see residential zoning, it's much lower, right? 35, 30 to 35 feet?
Yeah, I, I would be hesitant to say all future annexations will be, and then specify PUD or anything, because I, I think that just gives us less flexibility at that time. Yeah, I, I think we, we make, make that decision as we're looking at annexations. It's so tall.
So, let me get to the first slide, and we could talk about how we got there. But the planning commission did discuss that when we, when the code did come to them, with their consultant and the, and the attorney that worked on it. And that was the decision that the planning commission made at, at that time. But like I said earlier, before I started the presentation, we can always write an ordinance to change it again.
If I remember that night correctly, we were told that west side currently was sitting at 90 feet.
Absolutely, and that we negotiated it down.
Yep, that's what it...
We were told there wasn't much we can do, and so we were like, okay, let's try 75.
So the, how you got to the 190 feet was with the planned commercial development for Regency Park in the old code. It was 50 feet north of the Open Space Trail connecting the Santa Fe Trail and Struthers Road, which is now Jackson Creek Parkway, and east of Struthers Road in 100 feet, and then south of the Open Space Trail and west of Struthers Road. It was very confusing in the old code, and, and that road wasn't even there anymore for many years. Jackson Creek Parkway's been there for a while. So that's where they got the 50 and the 100 feet. And then we, in the new code, it's just a 50-feet flat for planned commercial development within Regency Park. So no 50 feet, no 100 feet of this side and that side of the road. It's just 50 feet flat that we've decided. And if you don't like that, the 50 feet too, we're here, open for discussion for that as well, for the planned commercial development within Regency Park.
I, I think what, I'll speak for myself, and the others can jump in, but I feel that night we were, we were looking for a compromise based on what we were told we could and couldn't do.
So I think what we need to get you is a map of the properties, a highlighted map of the properties that are not zoned PUD that would be impacted by a zoning ordinance, a, a, a land development code change in building height versus what is PUD. So we have plenty of time for this. We're going to brief the board of trustees on a couple of these questions at the beginning of November, and there's going to be more work that has to go into it. So it might be something that we come back in December and get you that map, because then, then you'll be able to know, if we were to change building height in the zoning code, these are the areas that would be impacted. And you could see those on the map versus the properties that are zoned PUD and have an approved sketch plan, which is a lot of, which is a majority of those properties. A zoning ordinance change to the land development code would not change that building height. There are other tools that are a little more extreme than an ordinance change to the zoning code to impact the building height for that. But the ordinance change wouldn't do it. So I think to get you where you need to be, we need to get you that, that map of what properties are straight zoned that are not currently, that are currently vacant.
I wonder if I could ask a question of commissioners. We've often debated building height, and, and we, I think, have a unanimous agreement that 90 feet was, is just too tall anywhere in Monument. That just doesn't reflect the small-town feel that we want. Have we ever decided what we feel is the maximum height that we feel is consistent with the small-town feel of Monument? To, to say, this, this is, this is what our utopian goal would be, that nothing would be higher than a certain number? What is that number?
Most of the... Pardon me? Well, and I think most of the discussions that I've been privy to, the time that I've been on the commission, which is probably longer than everybody else here, I think, 50 feet seems to be what everybody puts forward all the time, is 50 feet.
As the biggest tallest.
As, as the biggest tallest, and anything above 50, I think people have a lot of problems with, no matter where it's located. But I'm going to ask Debbie a question. Debbie, can you provide me, just for my own satisfaction, for no other reason, a copy of that map that the previous director told me existed? That says Jackson Creek Parkway used to be called Struthers Road?
It was in Regency Park ordinance that we found it in, and I'll, I'll send you a copy of that.
Yeah, because I got pretty disturbed over that map, if you'll remember.
And just a historical carryover from those original days when it was created? Yes. And, and I, I believe probably back in the day, whenever that happened, there was a thought, ah, who's going to build 90 anyway?
Probably.
So I, I too believe 50 feet, which would be about a four-story building, four stories, one story higher than our YMCA, to me would be the biggest that we would want to see anywhere in the municipality. So, so with that, that, that would be our utopian goal to work towards as, as we try and address what the board of trustees has asked.
So I think that gives us, from staff, when we, when we brief the board of trustees, to say, hey, we had this conversation, and the conversation is, yes, that the planning commission, height is, height is an area that the planning commission has some concern on, and we had a fruitful discussion here. We're going to follow up with some mapping and kind of separate out what's zoned PUD versus what's not zoned PUD currently. And what, what we're hoping to get from the board of trustees here in November is some guidance and direction on what they'd like to see the next steps to be.
Could I ask another question? We've got 75 feet. And the, what, what is that development that we just went through? Where it's 75 feet within 600 feet of, huh? Yeah. Okay, now, we've, we've got to live with that 75 feet, but can we con- control? But it has, the, the concern of the height has to do with the visibility of the people east of those buildings, right?
Well, that's one, one of the factors.
One of the factors, one of the factors. And so we have, our topography is such that there's quite a drop from, just for the purpose of this conversation, just from Jackson Creek Parkway itself down to I-25. Can, can we control that height, even though it's 75, by not allowing fill and such when they develop it? I mean, we're trying to control height, so what controls do we have? If it's sloped, I mean, it's got to be drainable.
They can just put it on a slope, really. Measure it from the ground. They can just...
That's true. But what I'm saying, 75 feet is 75 feet. But when you have a grade coming down, if they build that grade up to match the grade up there, now your 75 feet is really 75 feet. I'm saying, can that be controlled that they... Yeah, I don't know, I'm just saying.
You're looking for those other levers that we might have.
Well, and I think, isn't that what the board of trustees are looking for? I think, how, how do we control height based on where we are?
We're looking for some options. I, I can't answer that about the grading. I have some of my own questions and concerns about that and how that would be done. Zoning code versus engineering criteria manuals, right? So grading, dirt work typically comes out of a technical criteria manual that's not in the zoning code. So intermingling that with zoning ordinances is questionable for me, but it's nothing, I mean, I'm taking notes. We're going to kind of hash through and look through some of these things and see what our best tools, what our best tools are. But I definitely hear, I definitely hear the planning commission saying it's, it's a topic that, that we, we should visit a little bit more. And that, and that we're not done with that. So I, I, we also want to hit another topic and don't want to keep you here all night. So maybe we won't, maybe we won't belabor the height conversation anymore for this evening, but work on the maps for you and, and maybe continue the conversation in December when we have some mapping too?
I, I think ultimately, when you go big picture and really start looking at it, and, you know, talk about the big issue that's out there in the community and the areas we're talking about, and what it comes down to is use. And really, that's the discussion, and what do people want to see these areas used for? What do we want to see there? And I think that's the bigger, broader discussion that would draw or drive, okay, what is realistic height for what people really want there?
That is such a wonderful transition to the next topic. You just, you just lobbed me the softball. So let's, Debbie's going to stop sharing, so let's, let's go to that next, that next conversation point. So the, so the, the other conversation that has come up, and again, we're, we're speaking in generalities this evening, not speaking about any one particular property. But the conversation that has come up recently is the comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan related to those land use categories and the characteristics and the attributes that are laid out in each land use category. And the comprehensive plan is different from, from the zoning code. The, the town updated our comprehensive plan 2017, then moved into updating the zoning and subdivision ordinance based on that vision from that comp plan. Absolutely the right way to do things. There is some language in the comprehensive plan related to the industrial land use and the use of semi-trucks. And the language in the comprehensive plan actually plainly states no semi-trucks. However, by virtue of having industrial-zoned property in the Town of Monument, there, there are going to be semi-trucks. And so the conversation has been, how do, how does the Town of Monument control that vision for what those industrial properties are going to be, right? Because we've talked about it a little bit here this evening. There's PUD zoned properties, they allow distribution, where they allow warehouse and distribution, they allow light industrial, they are zoned for that. And just... And just by that zoning, there's some use of semi trucks. So the Board of Trustees, um, based on conversations that have happened recently with citizens on certain discussion points have said, um, how, how do we look at the comprehensive plan and that vision and ensure that we have encapsulated our vision in the zoning code? Uh, a- and the comment's been made, can we just reference C the comp plan? Well, that doesn't quite work because the comp plan is not the adopted ordinance. If you want to, um, craft that vision a little bit more and, and make it, uh, an ordinance, a have to do that needs to go in the zoning ordinance. And we've been talking to some citizens related to, um, industrial uses and semi truck traffic a- and what that would look like. What does it look like for the town of Monument? And based on those conversations and the Board of Trustees saying, hey, we want to just figure out how we can implement our vision a little bit better. I came up with three concepts, um, that would be tools that could be used to, maybe, you know, have a better vision of industrial. And so that's what you see here on your screen is, is a draft. Uh, it's been talked about a little bit with the town attorney. It is just, uh, easier to talk about something than it is to talk about just concepts in the air. So we put some down on paper. Concept one, um, use standards for industrial. In chapter eighteen, and I have it there eighteen four, uh, one fifty, there are already in the code supplemental use standards for industrial uses. Those include, uh, you have to be setback five hundred feet from a residentially zoned property. Or it talks about orientation of loading docks, orientation of parking landscaping setbacks. That's in the code currently. Concept one is adding to the land development code additional standards for industrial uses. And those could include things like access, um, how we look at curb cut design, um, circulation requirements, um, heavy duty truck parking, overnight truck parking. Is there an additional standard for that? Building features such as size, building orientation, building materials, loading doors, hours of delivery. That's a little dicey. But it was brought up by a citizen. Why can't we limit hours of delivery or hours of operation or engine idling? So there's a concept of do we want to craft our vision for industrial based on using these supplemental design standards? So concept two takes that a step further. We're not rezoning properties, but we redefine uses and add new definitions. The code currently defines warehouse and distribution, but perhaps we take it a step further and add these new definitions or some version of new definition for distribution facilities, um, micro fulfillment centers. Some of those buzzwords we're hearing around, um, you know, internet purchases and how those are distributed. And then redefine warehouse and distribution. So if we took a look at our code, um, supplemental use standards and redefining and adding definitions. If we do that, then we could change the code related to what zone districts those uses are allowed in. Does this impact the PUDs only in the definition of warehouse and distribution? If there's a different definition of warehouse and distribution, but it would impact any other zone district. So if we created distribution facility definitions and said, hey, in the light industrial, they're conditional or permitted. Redefining freight and truck yard and saying a freight and truck yard or a truck stop is not now permitted use in an industrial zone district. It's conditional use. Do we look at those types of tools through the zoning ordinance, um, to just change what the look of that industrial type of use is? So that would be another concept, the redefining and the looking at new definitions, uh, and what zone districts those uses are allowed in. But again, impact on PUD, um, only related to what uses are defined in the code versus what uses are defined in the PUD. And then concept three, which was brought to me, um, by a citizen is a zoning overlay. So this is where it kind of blends in the conversation and Commissioner Green said, yes, you can change, um, people zoning and building heights. You certainly can. You can, the town as a whole can rezone people's property, uh, to match the comprehensive plan. And that is, um, not in my experience done often and not, um, it's not very favorable. That is putting a zoning overlay that perhaps, um, adds additional conditions or additional standards to properties that have, um, a similar purpose, a similar goal, or there's similar character. Um, so I'm used to seeing, um, North Nevada overlay in Colorado Springs, that whole North Nevada corridor from Costco all the way down to the Old North End is a North Nevada overlay. And that overlay actually takes some of the uses that are allowed in the base zones and excludes them. It, it sets design standards, design guidelines, um, building orientation, that type of thing. And that was done for on top of all of those properties in that corridor. And that's basically rezoning or adding an overlay to existing base zone. Was it over, was it an overlay zone at one point? Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to respectfully disagree with you on that, actually. And if the, if the PUD ordinance and the sketch plan that's adopted with that establishes the height through the ordinance, I would say if they want to go to ninety feet and it's written into the zoning ordinance, we would not be able to say, no, now you can't do that. We, maybe we could, but I, I think that that's a larger fight. And again, that comes to what size of hammer does the town of Monument want to wield?
Would agree with that.
No. You are not. They have been rezoned to PUD. However, those PUDs do specify uses, right? Because at the beginning I said a PUD is height, type and density. So those types are defined through the sketch plan. So if, for instance, you define your uses as one of the uses, it's permitted as warehouse and distribution. And the town has a definition for warehouse and distribution, you need to meet that definition. And any of the supplemental design standards related to industrial, if you do not have an approved preliminary or final site plan, I would say site development standards would still apply. To those properties that are zoned with a sketch plan, they would just need to meet their, their site design standards. How does the site function, um, at the preliminary or final site plan phase? But we go back to how does the Board of Trustees or do they want to look at making code changes in any of these ways, right? Do you want to wield the big hammer and start talking about zoning overlays? Do we want to start with wielding the little, the little hammer and say, you know what? We want these to function and look a certain way and some site design standards that talk about circulation, building design, where the parking orientation, landscaping, screening and buffering a- and definitions gets us there. And that's basically the question for some guidance from staff from the Board of Trustees is how, how would we like to go about this? Because saying no semis, uh, is a little more difficult.
Okay, my question on the concepts one and two that you presented were it's like a lot of definitions of things. How, how would that impact the existing properties? That, for example, or in the Conex area? To reduce what they now believe they can do. Can that be done? Uh, that, that's
Um, you know, I don't know. The, a lot of those PUDs talk about warehouse and distribution as an allowed use. I- in lieu of there being any separate definition on a sketch plan related to what warehouse and distribution is, I would say, well, we follow the town code related to the definition of your allowance for warehouse and distribution.
Constrained to, and we are constrained to that, to what those definitions currently are. Or can we clarify definitions? Is that what some of these concepts?
That would be clarifying some of the definitions. And yes, and then that's a concept that we've been talking with the town attorney about when it comes to a PUD setting the type of use and stating on it, we're allowed to do single family, multifamily, um, manufacturing, light manufacturing and warehouse and distribution, right? What do those uses mean? They haven't defined those separately. Would we then revert back to the, the code and clarify definitions? So that is, um, a route we could potentially take. Again, have to talk it out with town attorney. A lot more has to go into this, but we're trying to get some ideas of like a, a track to go down. That would be amenable to planning commission, Board of Trustees. So the PUD, th- there's multiple phases to it, right? So if PUD currently, well, under the old code, the PUD zoning could be established and the PUD, uh, zone district was accompanied by a sketch plan. That sketch plan was super vague. It didn't set design standards. It only focused on these are our building heights and this is what the uses are going to be. But as far as building setbacks, landscaping setbacks, it, it didn't do any of that. However, before you go vertical with construction, the PUD still allows you to submit that refined PUD site plan. And that's when the PUD, you don't need to follow the setbacks in code. You can create your own setbacks. Other than height, type and density, which is incorporated into the rezoning of the zoning of the property itself, into the zoning ordinance. Potentially on both. Because there's nothing in the code that says PUD is exempt from supplemental use standards for industrial. It still defers to the code for, um, any design or any element that's not mentioned through the PUD. So, um, staff would say a PUD doesn't, um, exempt you from, uh, supplemental use standards. And there's some language in there that reflects that related specifically to a PUD. And making sure that you're, you're following the supplemental use standards for the PUD. But it, it references you follow the supplemental use standards for a PUD.
So, so wherever this use is permitted, these concepts would apply.
Right. It's an, if it's an industrial use.
Regardless of the, the zoning, PUD or industrial.
Because in the, in the old code, we had an industrial section. If you were in the P, P, PD section of code, you had to follow these light industrial uses such as five hundred feet from residential area. Now that industrial use section is not just for PUDs, it's for any, um, zoning area. If you have that type of use in your zoning designation, you have to follow those guidelines of standards.
But anything that's been approved already is grandfathered to prior to the approval of the new code.
Anything that's been approved for a preliminary or final site plan would be grandfathered related to supplemental, supplemental use standards.
And now how much of that are we talking about?
Um, not as much.
So this discussion, that would be another good idea or good thing for us to look at is, you know, how much property are we talking about here that we would affect going forward, opposed to how many of them are locked in?
Site, site is, uh, supplemental standards for industrial would impact, you know, everything along Baptist Road, uh, everything along Old Denver Road. Any of that that's zoned for industrial, but it's currently vacant. Uh, it would impact, uh, anything that's vacant up in the Wolf, Wolf Ridge? Wolf Business Park, thank you, in Wolf Business Park. So we could definitely get you a map of anything that's PUD zoned for industrial or straight zone for industrial that is vacant. And that would be what it would impact. Design, design standards and potentially, um, redefining uses and clarifying the definitions of uses. I'm talking, we're talking about anything that's grandfathered, I think we would say when you're looking at supplemental use standards, anywhere that there is a final, a preliminary and or final site plan approved, that would be off the table. Anything that's just zoned with a sketch plan, as far as site design standards go, would be on the table. Because you don't have a vested property where you haven't built anything. So if I don't have a preliminary and final site plan, I can't tell you how your parking orientation is going to go because I haven't had a chance to look at that yet. That final site plan is when staff would evaluate building orientation, materials, parking. So if you don't have a preliminary and or final site plan and you submit one now under the new code, the supplemental standards apply. We could add more of those, change those. Okay.
I would love to see a map and these, these concepts that we're talking about. And if, if we're going to be using those levers, what kind of impact is it going to have on the state of Monument?
So so where, where they're building, uh, the Woodman right now? Church.
The church.
Uh, Woodman now, gotcha.
So that's a site plan that's already been approved. So anything that's built in that area goes by the old code.
Yep, the, the only prelimi- there's a Conexus preliminary PD site plan that's adjacent to the church. So that's a vested right.
Okay.
To the south.
Yeah.
To the south.
And then Conexus Phase Two and Three, only a sketch PD plan has been approved, nothing else. So there's no vested right yet.
Yeah, that's what fusion comes is what we have and what we don't have.
Yeah.
And you know, I think that there's some conversation that, right, planning is so gray. I think there's some conversation to be had there related to if you have a preliminary site plan, um, the church is part of a preliminary site plan. But before they went vertical, they needed a final site plan. And that final site plan is the detail of the parking and the building height and what the building looks like. There's almost an argument to be made there that because the supplemental use standards are in the code now, if you were in an industrial use, that you would still need to follow those from a design perspective if you didn't have a final, a final site plan approved, right? So there's an argument to be made there because those criteria exist. Some of those criteria exist today. And again, at a preliminary site plan, we may not see all of your parking and all of your, your landscaping and design, which goes into some of these existing supplemental standards. So that would be, that would be the gray part for me.
I, um, I, I mean, it, it's kind of interesting that you put the one about the twenty-six thousand pounds and stuff in there as an example. Uh, the one that continues to resonate in my mind is, you know, we approved that, that crane company. One of the questions I asked that night was, are we okay with these cranes going through our Old Town to get to the highway? You know, so in that, that example, that, that would be one where the industrial bumps up against the residential or another zoning area that we would have to consider. Okay. Does, does that fit to have a big semi or a crane rolling through our Old Town Monument?
Um, just remember Willow Springs, um, Willow Ranch Road is being built through Willow Springs Ranch. And that's going to be the new truck route for the downtown area. So the second, once it's developed and done, um, they will not be cutting, cutting down Second Street. However, Elite Crane is off of Mitchell, which is right down where that collector road is sold. That's being built, so they will be going that way instead of through the downtown.
That's another question, okay. That roadway coming in, which is going to become a, a big transportation area, once it's all developed down there. And we got the Old Denver Highway, which we don't want a lot of traffic on the Old Denver Highway, do we? Heavy traffic, no matter who it is. Correct? Well, that's, that's what the big issue was when a thousand people showed up at that meeting. Now, my question, do we have? Are we forced to develop a roadway to satisfy a landowner? When there's other alternatives?
I don't, I don't know if we can, I don't know if we could answer that. I can tell you Old Denver Road is a truck route.
But it's a 6,000 pound truck route, I believe.
Um, not in the, not in the town code. There's no weight.
I had read somewhere from the planning commission, from the, uh,
Isn't like chapter six or something of the code for the designated truck route? And it tells you where all the designated truck routes are in the town of Monument.
And I guess what it comes down to, again, I'll go back to my initial point is, you know, what do we really want? What's the use for? I mean, we look at that circle that was put down there at Old Denver Highway and Baptist. Well, if you've ever stood there and watched a semi try to navigate that circle to get back to the pilot because they missed the entrance, it's, it's pretty amusing because it's not a very navigatable circle. But yet we're going to have the heavy industrial truck route coming back through that up Baptist to get to the highway. They've now got to navigate that circle. So bigger picture, you know, maybe we should have thought through, and that was before me. What do we put in the circle? Does that make sense? What's the future growth look like? We, we've got to start as a, a town on these boards, looking at the bigger picture here. What do we really want? How do we want to structure things? The circle's great, looks nice, artwork is awesome. But when you start to look at it and you, you say, oh, well, that's where the trucks are going to go now, it's not navigable.
You don't like traffic circles, do you?
I don't, not at all. And I grew up, I, I grew up in New Jersey and there are a lot of them.
I grew up in New Jersey.
Yeah.
It's the second time tonight you mentioned the traffic circles.
But it's the reality, it's hilarious. I mean, you go and you park there to go walk on the trail and you watch these semis try to get back around this thing? And then it ain't happening. Yeah. And, and the reality is, is we're putting how many truck stops there? And now it's a, a heavy flow area for now a crane company? The, the circle doesn't work there now. Now what are we going to do?
Uh, let the record show that I am in favor of traffic circles. Big fan.
I have no problem with them as long as they're functional.
Um, so, so I see these concepts and, and we're talking about, um, you know, weight limits and definitions of distribution facility and defining what kind of trucks can and can't be used or should or shouldn't be used. Um, and, and I feel like we're, we're trying to design something without first defining the requirements. We're building a duck, but, and we're saying, well, we, we need to think about the, the bill and, and the wings and how web should the feet be, but we haven't decided what the duck is supposed to do. So I feel like we need to have a discussion about when we're talking about warehouse and distribution, what are the qualities that we're looking for? Before we start diving into the levers and the tools? Don't we, we need to define what we want so that we know what to do with those tools?
Do you want something? Do you, do we, so, yes, I mean, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. Um, that's a whole other conversation too, right? I mean, because I, I believe that the town's very split on how, how to address this. Uh, no, we, some would say we don't want any semis. Um, you know, I, I think of it and say, how, how do we do that? So yes, if, if you, um, planning commissioners have some type of thoughts in your head, you know, I think we should, I would love to hear those, um, about what, what would be acceptable? Like what, what do we want it to look like? I- i- if, if there has to be something and we have to make, um, an informed decision and a compromise on, on, on how to activate this vision.
I, I think it would be falling not to. Finding the tools and tweak these different concepts towards an end without knowing the end that we're trying to tweak towards. I've seen software and buildings developed without defining the requirements, uh, ahead of time. It's usually disastrous. So I, I think we need to talk about what, what we think a warehouse and distribution in Monument should look and feel like so that we know what to apply to it.
So then you agree to concept number two with the definitions? Yep.
And, and all of the concepts ultimately are going towards the end of getting a warehouse distribution use into a desired end state, right? All, all three of those concepts are, are addressing that. We just need to know what a desired end state looks like.
Right. And, and at least the, the concepts are just geared to help discuss like how, how do we want to try to get there? Um, we, eh, eh, and we're trying to get someplace without knowing where we're going. But the comp plan is also kind of guiding some of the conversations to date on where we're going. And, and again, a lot of it's revolving around that conversation of no semi trucks, smaller business. I mean, there's, there's a whole concept, a, a whole vision there, attributes and characteristics from the comp plan. So, um, it's a hard conversation to have, um, when, when we're saying, hey, we want, we want something better than, we're, we're wanting something better. We want the tools to give something better than what has been discussed with the town to date, right?
What's allowed today is not what we think is desired. So we want to have tools to get what we desire, but we haven't yet fully defined what we desire. Right? Did I say that correctly?
Eh, eh, you certainly did. I, I believe that's the, uh, that's a hard point to get agreement on is what are the desires?
And, and I would argue comp plan by its definition represents the desires of the community. I think that is the starting point for any discussion on what one community wants to define desired end state.
Right, right. And, and this, I'll make this comment based on having set up here. And there's a number of commissioners that were here. I think with our new planning director, we have more latitude than we had previously. We had tremendous discussion up here. We had tremendous discussion up here about the height that occurred by that. Cause of the discussion we had here, it caused the developer reduce his height down and make compromises. What I'm saying is this, people don't like to hear us sitting up here talking sometimes and pandering back and forth about what we don't like, but we know enough cause sufficient concern that the way the board of trustees gets compromised is oftentimes the things that we put in place down here to help them say we need to make a comp. Which means we have discussions that previously were considered and then we actually pushed it beyond the limits, were considered off limits because that's the way it is. Well, it's not necessarily that's the way it is. And I don't believe our new director, I think our direct, new director sees gray areas and gray areas require discussion. And that wasn't permitted before, I've been, I've been on this board since late 16, early 17. And we've had more discussions in the last year. Had an all the.
I'll reel in when you go too far.
Yes. I'm, I'm sure you will, but, 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 but we weren't able to go anywhere near far before. Okay. Uh, but we did it anyway. Uh, and, uh, got berated for it, but you know, I've been berated before. But what, what I'm saying is the board of trustees has a lot of latitude when it gets there, but they need something to help them sometimes to get there. Something that you can't provide in the planning department because you have to go by what's there. What you present to us is what's there. We can have discussions on spatially bringing in comprehensive plan. We can bring in the comprehensive plan, I think, more so than, than you can. May be wrong. But our discussions related to the comprehensive plan.
It's true, because everyone's interpretation of the comprehensive plan is different.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that was an example of where we got the height compromised on the height. What we're trying, what the board of trustees are looking at, how do we control what we've got? And do it reasonably? That's all I think the board of trustees are trying to do because we've got to live with what, a lot of what we've got unless we can get compromises in some cases.
Okay. So we unpacked a lot here today and I do want to also be respectful of your time. We, we have another part of this, which is aside from, you know, height and, um, eh, eh, industrial type of uses, you know, what are the other items that, that the, the commission might want to, uh, add to a list to look at? But maybe that's something we would be best unpacking in December because we, we, we did a lot here. And I think we have a lot of good, um, information, um, to bring back for December. We're going to work on some from, on some maps for our visual learners. Um, make sure that we can separate those out a little bit more. Um, we will, um, kind of report out to the board of trustees that the commissioners do see some concerns around height and, and, and wanting to discuss that a little bit more and wanting to understand, you know, what our end goal is for industrial type of uses and that there's an interest there. Um, our hope is we'll get, get some go ahead from the board of trustees. Um, maybe form, um, a group, um, with some citizens that have concerns about industrial as well as some industrial property owners because we have to have a balance. Uh, perhaps a planning commission member sits in that group. You know, it's an informal group to talk about, um, you know, in- industrial, um, uses, our, our vision, the comp plan related to, um, of some of that. So we'll, we'll be hopefully getting the, the head nods from the board of trustees to maybe put a group together that would recommend something back. Um, and so how I've done that in the past is to have a board member and a planning commission member as well as citizens on, on both sides of the argument. Um, kind of get in a room and just talk about these things. Um, and bring forward a, a, an ordinance of some type. So that's what we're looking for from the board of trustees in November. And then I think what we'll do is follow up. Um, we'll, we'll probably skip our meeting in, in, in November unless you wanted to do this again. But we'll have items for December and we could, um, you know, i- i- it's up to the commission. We can have a conversation, continue a conversation of this in November after we've talked to the board of trustees. We can wait until December and pair it with, um, our items. Um, it's, it's really up to what, what would you like to see?
Well, coming into this meeting, just to be thinking about items and issues that you could.
Absolutely.
And so we raised some.
Do we have?
Yeah, with a whole bunch of discussion. If we have additional items, can we just fire them off without a bunch of discussion?
Absolutely. Good. We'll get them on the list. Um, and we're going to kind of track those. So if, yeah, I mean, that, that works too, Commissioner.
No, it's an issue. Well, you just bring up your issue.
Yeah, well, my, my issue was the, the, the relationship of gas stations, residential properties. And that's right at 500 right now. Yes. And, uh, but I've, it's a 500 and, uh, I did quite a bit of research. I don't know, even though I, I think there's a lot of reason that it should be greater than that from residential properties. I, I don't know that we'd be able to make a persuasive argument, supportive argument.
Do you have a number?
Don't have a number. Uh, I do have one number. There is, the EPA requires that any school that is within 1,000 feet of a, uh, gas station, et cetera, requires a lot of study. Now, if that is true for, if, if nothing else, if we could set a standard that a, a school could, uh, uh, sir, a station, these multi-stations couldn't be built within a thousand feet of a school, uh, it may save a problem somewhere down the road. Um, because if the EPA is investigating any school that's within a thousand feet of an existing station, it, it must mean that there's issues there. I tried to do some research on that and there is a lot of research on it, but man, as I read through, I couldn't come up with anything. But with regard to residential property, in fact, we may be even better off here at 500 feet than some cities are at 300 feet. So e- even though, uh, I, I think 500 feet is still not sufficient from a residential property. When you have, um, a home, you've got one of these, uh, come and go stations and one of these multi-station. 24 hours a day, you've got motorcycles, you've got noise, you've got light, you, it's, uh, it's a tough one. So you, you want to put that on there, but huh?
I have a scale of buildings. We talked specifically about scale is also something that we should explore. 400,000 square foot facility may have a short high. Scale. So it could just scale in addition to height. And.
Is this scale for a particular use or just in general?
In general.
Okay.
There are certain types of uses that are two really large footprints, but I'm not thinking specifically about. Thinking standard. Um, and during several of our, uh, topics not on the agenda, we residents express a lot of concern about water. Town. So I, I would like to see some investigation of our landscaping standards to see how.
Our landscape guidelines are zero escape, um, plans that you don't have to water as often. That just requires dripping.
As a, as a zero, zero turf.
We do allow turf. It's 25% for residential and I forgot the percentage for non-residential, but it's, that's in our code.
At the very least, we put it on, we'll put it on the list and we can pull that out and talk about it, right? We, we just updated the landscaping code and maybe it's just giving, um, the public a little more education on what that looks like now. We have a plant list, um, evaluation. So, um, and, and I know we've had some conversation with, I've had some conversation with others about this, the 25%. So, um.
25% turf is. Not comfortable with that. Yeah, 25% turf is, not comfortable with that. Those are my ideas.
So I, I guess I have one idea, but with a thought, and it's been mentioned many a time from this group, we just feel like there's a lack of, vision's not a good word, but what's the desired state? What are we building towards? Um, you know, and there's been discussions of, you know, do, do we even truly understand where the trustees minds are as far as where we're going with certain land use? Cause we can just be batting our heads against the wall saying, oh yeah, we, we think that's a great place for an apartment building and then they shoot it down because they don't. I think there just needs to be some understanding of where each group is. I'm a big one and as we go along, you'll learn with me. I moved here from Tennessee, retired military, moved here from Tennessee and we used to call them roads to nowhere. But they had highways, large roads, communities built out the roads. The infrastructure was always in place long before the development came. It's very proactive. I used to laugh at it, but now that I've moved away from it, it made a whole heck of a lot of sense because they understood the capacities before they put in the, uh, the development. So it was actually looking at what the future was truly going to be opposed to reacting to what, oh my God, what did we just do? So that's a big one for me. Jackson Creek Parkway is a perfect example, but it's, it's half done. Powers is even a better one. It's great that they're opening this new interchange that stops in like a mile. It's so cool.
I'm, I'm done solving Colorado Springs problems. We need to focus in Monument now.
I heard they came in 2 million under budget. I hope it's for the rest of Powers where that money's going to go now. But that, those are my thoughts.
So you'd like to look at roadway infrastructure?
Yeah. I mean, what are we building to? Cause I think that's really what truly affects the residents of the town is how they navigate.
And has the planning commission, do you have regular, I feel like Debbie and I talked about this, do you have regular joint meetings with the board of trustees and the planning commission or quarterly or twice a year or once a year?
I think we did once since I've been here. Yeah. It was, um, a joint work session. I think it was regarding the code or, yeah, yeah.
Would that be something that you, that the planning commission would be interested in? Um, okay.
On a routine schedule, not, not just one special, it's a feel-good kumbaya.
Would you like the work sessions to be topics that you're discussing tonight or?
Well, I don't think we should drive it. I, I think yes, but I, maybe the board of trustees has topics they'd like to discuss.
Because just in case they ask us what, what you would like, so I just wanted to have a list.
Well, I think it's more general, right?
It's misunderstanding vision.
I, I have a request. It's really, really small and it'd be really, really easy to do. It's about public notification and it's over that, um, conditional use across the street from me. Eight of us got the letter in the mail. It said conditional use under da, da, da code. And it didn't tell what the request was. And that was really annoying because when you go to the website and, you know, sometimes the cases change and the description changes and in the end, not two people on my block, including me, who's been a planner forever, knew what it was, what, what they were requesting. So all you have to do in your letter is put a blank line and say, fill in what you're
Sean?
I'm kind of a quiet observer for right now just because it's obviously, it's other than the meeting where we discussed the building height, which was May 12th. And the reason I remember that's because that's the night they got sworn in and I about decided to rip that piece of paper up and never come back. Yeah, I think we left here, what, 11 o'clock? So, um, yeah, that was my first dealing with this whole situation. I wasn't even a participant. I was just an active observer. So to the landscaping point, I mean, I'm, I'm relatively new to Monument. I mean, I've lived in Monument since 2016. Um, but to the landscaping point, um, I am building a home right now with classic over in Jackson Creek North and the requirements that they give you on the HOA requirements for landscaping blend exactly with what the town code is. So for future use, I think that's, that's obviously being presented. To, and pardon me, I don't remember your name, but, um, with the idea of what do we want? I'm very much involved with technology and the surveys that the town has sent out regarding the police department and other things, um, I think we need to get some engagement from the community first to really figure out what we want. So I like that to that point. How do we do that? I mean, again, I'm a technology junkie, so I respond to the surveys I get on my cell phone or I get on the email. I know not everybody does. Some people just throw them away and do whatever, but if we don't attempt to make an effort to get that engagement from the community on what we truly do, one as a town, um, I don't know how we're going to come to that, that point. Also coming from more of a metro area, which I'm sure everybody here kind of has, it's kind of a melting pot community, but, um, I've seen some things from a law enforcement standpoint. Um, for those of you don't know, I do have 17 years of law enforcement experience. So a lot of this warehouse and I'm looking at this from a different perspective, kind of an outsider coming in. Um, you've got some major concerns when you start bringing in distribution centers and those types of things from a law enforcement standpoint. I'm sorry to keep looking at you, but you're sitting there. Traffic circles are a prime example. Putting the traffic circle, circle up on Higbee Road, you got a bunch of high school kids that are inexperienced with driving in those traffic circles? You guys are going to be busy. You're already busy enough. So we're going to have to look at that from a bigger picture, from a cost standpoint to the town or additional officers, more specialized training, uh, when it comes to traffic, even with doing the stuff over on Denver Road. I mean, that's all things that have to be taken into consideration when we're talking about these different districts. Yes, we need to define them by all means, we have to, but we also have to look at that from a big picture, um, not so much just from the planning aspect, from the other support structures that are going to have to be put into the town associated with that. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Um, anything else for staff today? Okay, well, we appreciate your, appreciate your time.
Okay. So, um, if that now concludes the, uh, work session, um, lastly, we have announcements. Um, the only announcement here is the next official meeting is December 8th, uh, 6:00 PM. I would like to throw it, I'm sorry, I'm dragging this later. I'm always for not skipping a meeting if we could have productive discussions like this. Think a lot of what we just got stale if we wait two months. So I would like to propose a meeting in November, even if it's just for us to have these, a, a continuation of this type of, uh, these types of topics. It's on my calendar as a recurring appointment. I've already blocked it.
And we'll see, maybe we'll, um, reach out, reach out to you. Let's, we'll see how the board of trustees meeting goes as far as direction and whatnot. Um, and a, a lot of that, maybe we'll drive how we structure the, um, a meeting for November.
November 15th. 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 Yeah, it's going to be the same presentation.
We'll just ask them if, maybe we'll ask them if they'll just come on the 10th, right? There, there's no, the design, the roadway design is, I mean, that's really, doesn't
And that design is not set in stone with the annexation or anything. Just want to let you know that.
Okay. Um, any other announcements from commissioners? Staff, any other announcements? That, we are going to go ahead and formally adjourn the meeting.